Good evening. I'd like to call this March 17th, 2025 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Koch, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Conklin.
Here.
Ms. Lavelette.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is at the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and happy St. Patrick's Day. And we are with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. For my superintendent's report, I would like to begin with saying how happy and pleased I am to see a room full of our students here and their families. Thank you for coming out tonight. It's always nice to have a full house if not for anything but the first portion of our meeting. So noting that, once we do our commendations, we do recognize that folks are anxious to get home, so please feel free when we jump into that portion of our agenda to leave. But first, I would like to present my superintendent's report. On Friday, many of us in the district had the pleasure of attending our annual Hall of Fame luncheon, as well as the Hall of Fame dinner. Our luncheon was held at Central Trail Elementary, and our dinner was held at the Slovenia Country Club. It was fabulous to see so many of our alumni out and being celebrated for their accomplishments. It truly is evidence of how well the Slovenia schools have performed and invested in our number-one assets, our students, for decades, and it's such a privilege to be there. We also were able to once again recognize our Educator of the Year, which she did a phenomenal job. Miss Kerr was fascinating, but moving.
Fabulous.
Fabulous, moving, just her whole speech. It was another opportunity to acknowledge her as the Educator of the Year. So Friday was a fantastic day here in Slovenia schools. Saturday, I had the pleasure of going over to Southview and kicking off Dance for a Chance, which was outstanding. Yay! It was a lot of fun and a lot of energy, although I did start at 12:00 noon. I don't know what the energy looked like around 6:30 or 7:00, but the kids were raring to go. It was wonderful. They were supporting the LLS organization, and it was personal this year for some of our Cougars, as we lost one of our own just under, maybe around a month ago. So it was an honor to be there and to see our students pay it forward and to make a difference for those who have been stricken with illness. So thank you, Cougars who are in the room, who participated either there in person, or helped volunteer to set up that day, or donated money, or any other aspect to support Dance for a Chance. A couple of other things I wanted to share is this Wednesday, a couple of us, a board member, myself, Adam, will be traveling down to Columbus, along with some folks and our educators in our district, to speak to our state representatives about a very hot topic that is really on the forefront of our minds as a school district, and that has to do with school funding. For those of you who may already be aware, Mr. Koch was kind enough to send a letter to all of our parents and residents in the districts of which we had contact information for, email addresses. If you haven't had a chance, please check out his presentation that really outlines school funding, not only just how it works, but also the potential impact of the governor's budget bill. We are really going to advocate. That's our whole purpose, is to go down there and have a voice and FaceTime with our representatives to explain our story, that if the budget bill goes through as planned right now, the impact it will have on our community, our students, our schools, and our programs, and really plead with our representatives to go in a different direction and fund this at an appropriate level. And I think that's the 2024 level instead of 2022. Is that correct, Mr. Koch? So I just want our community members that are here tonight, as well as those who may be watching at a later time, to know that our board members will be in attendance. I think it's Mr. Feller, you will be going down to continue to advocate for not only public education, but education at our Slovenia schools, so we can continue our tradition of excellence. And that concludes almost, almost, my superintendent's report. Students, you only have about four more days till spring break. Hang in there. Next week, we will start. Friday will be the last day of school for our students in the district, and spring break is upon us, and we have entered our fourth quarter. So we will have the stretch underway once we get back. So I'm excited for our students to have a break, as well as our educators. It's a time for them to kind of sit back, relax, have some fun. I certainly hope that Mother Nature cooperates, so we can get some warm weather, not only for our students and families, but for our employees as well. That concludes my superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. Okay, then it's time for recognition of achievement. Commercations.
Yes. Oh, and we have a room full. I'm so thrilled to have everyone here tonight. I am recommending item 3.1, which is the recognition of achievement. Before the board actually votes on the recognition of achievement, I do want to highlight, we have several students that are here tonight. We are going to call you up. We have certificates for each of you. We will call you up by name, as well as your coaches, and then we will also take a group shot over here by the back stand with the logo on it, okay? Some of you have been here before, so this is an old hat, and that's fun to say as well. So we're going to come on down to the microphone and podium and recognize our students on behalf of the board. All right. We are first going to recognize our Southview High School students who scored an ACT score of 26 or higher, as noted on the agenda. And now we are going to jump right into our student athletes. Tonight, we are going to recognize first our Southview Boys' Basketball Team. We're going to start, though, with the coach. Coach Springs, come on up here. You are the Coach of the Year for the Cardinal Division for '24-'25. And we also are going to recognize the NLL Player of the Year, Cardinal Division from Southview High School, Juwan Witcher. Come on, Juwan. All right, team Cougars, come on down. Does it call your name? Juwan, you should have Jaren Witcher. Yep, that's next. Jaren Witcher, come on. Oh, you're right there. You got another one, sir. All right, Juwan, Juwan. Thank you. Guys, I'm going to apologize upfront. These are a lot of interesting names, and my bifocals need to be upgraded. I'm just telling you. We have Antonio Smith. Dalen Selman. Maxwell Powers. Is Maxwell here tonight? Okay. We can give his certificate to the coach, or to Mr. Huss, either way. So I said, let's see, Maxwell Powers. How about Jackson Pollock? Dylan Morrow? Dylan is not here this evening? All righty. How about Maurice MacArthur? William Maisies? Jonathan March Jr.? Adam Lapla? Brandon Ingram Jr. And Damian Clay. We are our assistant coach. We didn't get our assistant coach. Mike Kavanaugh. Mike, come on down, Assistant Coach. Come on. Oh, there he is. Big Mike. Coach Mike. Coach Mike. Coach Mike.
Yeah, Julie needs to be in the front.
Yeah. Julie, you can go in the front. You're not going to block anyone. You're fine. Julie, you're not high enough there. You need to go in the front, right there. You're not going to block anybody. You can stand.
I take it they had a good season?
Yeah.
Yeah, they won the league back-to-back, and then they made it to district finals.
No.
Central Catholic.
Probably had half their team from Slovenia.
Probably.
At least.
All right, next up, it is my pleasure to recognize the Southview Dance Team, who attended the OASSA State and UDA National Dance Team Championship. First, we're going to recognize Coach Heather. Coach, you here? Where's Coach Heather? Come on up. We're going to give you the team certificate. Congratulations. We have Taylor Welley. Welley? We have Morgan Shabuda. Shabeta? I think it's Shabeta. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Yes, I'm getting better. Third year's a charm. Charlotte Sexton? Charlotte's not here? All right. How about Sylvia Schuster? No, good clipper anyway. Allison Scharf? Bella Rusin? Come on down, Bella. Ally Rowe? Carly Nessbaum? Taylor Kierwitzkowski? Come on down. Isabel Noth? Olivia Jurzki? How about Callie Hess? Leah Hagerty? Elise Gruevel? Is that it? Elise Gruevel? And Tegan Konstantinoff. Yes. I had the pleasure of seeing these ladies and our Northview Cheer Team, or Dance Team, as well, down at the competition. It warms my heart. These girls are the hardest-working athletes I think I've ever seen. So congratulations to our Cougarets Wildcats. You're up next. Hold on. We have one. Haley. Madeline Horton. Yep. Next, we would like to recognize another student athlete, but we're going to switch gears and head on over to Northview. We have Madeline Horton, who is the 2025 OASSA State Diving Championship and finishing first, team all NLL in the Buckeye Division. Madeline, you are a talented young lady. Well done. Where's my other competition cheer? All right, Northview Dance Team. Where's my competition cheer? She danced with me the other page. Yes, right here. Okay, I got it. Bria and Zalada. Yep. So we're going to go with Coach Kara. All righty, next up for Northview, we are going to recognize Northview's Competition Cheer Team, who qualified and competed in the 2025 OASSA State Championships. They placed eighth place in the Division Two Game Day Building. So congratulations to these athletes. We would like to recognize, is Coach Kara Zalinski here tonight? Coach Kara? There she is. Congratulations, Coach. We would also like to recognize Margot Zeletta. Haley Murphy. Molly McCoy. Ellie Harold. Georgia Gruensen. Emmy Davis. Briel Bentley. Congratulations, athletes. Yes, Northview Dance feels so good. So we have. Miranda, got it. All right, we are recognizing our Northview Dance Team for the 2025. Look at our Cougars cheering them on, just like they did the other way. I love our Slovenia students. The Northview Dance Team competed in the 2025 OASSA State Dance Championships, where they placed fourth in hip-hop, and sixth in poem, and sixth in contemporary lyrical. So first, let's have Coach Alyssa Kohler. Coach Alyssa, come on up. Congratulations. Next, we have Miranda Wigfield. Kenneth Stitchler. Delaney Stedky. Mackenzie Rothkar. Madison Knopfiger. Sophia Gibson. Addison Falcone. And Sidney DeBouvier? DeBouver. Got it. Took a little help. Need some tutoring with that. as listed and recognize this evening. As item 3.1, I recommend for approval.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any comments or questions?
Congratulations. So proud of our Slovenia students.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. This is this time in the agenda where if you all want to hang out, feel free, but we understand, we may not be your number-one priority right now.
We know how to clear a room.
Like, you can go.
Forever govern ignorance. If you want to stick around, it's enough. Paraphrasing James Madison for you.
There you go.
JP, JP.
Bye. All righty. So we will continue with our regular meeting. This is the first opportunity for public participation for items which are on our agenda. Amy?
None.
None? Okay, seeing none. Then we are with you, Mr. Koch.
So I just, you want me to keep going?
If you want to wait, you can wait.
Congratulations. Feels good. Recognize kiddos. Best part of the job. Are you set it up?
Is he going to dance for us?
Thanks, Mr. Huss. Appreciate it.
All right, y'all have to leave.
Come on.
All right, just talk real loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Go on, Mr. Koch.
I just have a few things for this month. I'll do the first two in consent agenda items, if you don't mind. Minutes for 5.1 from March 10th and February 24th, and then 5.2 is the Treasurers Report for month ending February 28th. Just wanted to highlight on February, you know, for the month, we did get our property tax settlements. We are, we have one large public utility delinquent, so that could have an impact on our bottom line this year in deficit spending or not. So we're working with the county and to get that paid yet this fiscal year, but as of right now, it's looking like it won't come until August. So something we're working on there for our property taxes.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 5.1 and 5.2.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And then 5.4 is just an annual Lucas County rate resolution, just certifying the rates for the year based on the different values. So it's just a blanket approval for the month, or for the year.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And then I'll talk about 5.5 to 5.16, I believe, but they're just so annually, we're able to do some border revision complaints. These are only commercial properties, over a $500,000 difference between what the sale price was and what the taxable value is. So very large discrepancies in terms of sale prices, and again, only on commercial properties.
No residential properties.
No residential, similar to what we've done for many years here. But we do need to have them as individual.
That makes sense.
Individual resolution numbers.
Yeah, it wouldn't feel right to do this as a consent.
Yep, so 5.5.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
5.6?
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any comments or questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
5.7?
I'll move for approval.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
5.8?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
5.9?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Comments or questions? Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
5.11?
Move for approval.
I'll second. Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
You know, when I'm filling these out tomorrow, it probably would have been helpful if the same first and second happened, but I'm just messing.
I'm trying to help you out.
Yeah, it's all good.
I'm not going to ask comments or questions.
I'm trying not to be a hog.
Yeah. 5.12?
I'll move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
5.13?
Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
5.14?
For approval.
Second. Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
5.15?
I'll move for approval.
Second. Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And last but not least, 5.16?
I'll move for approval.
Second. Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We are back with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 6.1, which is the acceptance of gifts. The Veterans of Foreign Wars of Ohio charities, more specifically, the VFW Post 2898 donated $10,000 toward Northview's flagpole. This is a very, very generous donation.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much. That is incredibly generous.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 6.2, which is the approval of two field trips. One will be for Stranahan students, along with a teacher and several staff members, to go to Camp Store overnight. And the second trip is with Anna Drake and several of her colleagues to accompany junior high school students to the Science Olympiad State Finals.
I'll move for approval.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Well, congratulations to making the Science Olympiad State Finals. That's very exciting.
Fabulous. It's wonderful. Adam?
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to recommend policy, or item 6.3 for approval, which is a policy revision for a second read, for religious, or release time for religious instruction during the school day.
I'll move for approval.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 6.4, a variety of policies for a first read. No action is to be taken at this time.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I...
I, on 5136.01, and I know this, this is not actually a change, this is, my comment relates to what was already in there, so. I think...
Which one? Electronic equipment.
I was looking at it, and it seems, I think there's some overlap with 5136, is it .0? Electronic devices, because the, the electronic equipment also references devices, and, and then electronic devices is entirely separate section, or, policy. And my concern is that electronic equipment appears more restrictive than the electronic devices policy. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can move towards consistency on that. And my second concern is...
I seek clarification. You said 5136, which is the electronic equipment overlaps with which policy?
Electronic devices. And I'm trying to find the number, I don't have it.
Okay, I'll find it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then my second concern is that electronic equipment says, the Board of Education will supply any electronic equipment or devices necessary for participation in the educational program. And we do require students to purchase, like, for example, T-84 calculators...
We do.
Regularly, and headphones, things like that. So I think maybe it might be worthwhile to define what we mean by electronic equipment in the policy.
That's a good idea.
To exclude things like calculators.
Thank you for that feedback.
And don't we also, I mean, we're charged for Chromebooks as well, for the use of Chromebooks. So I don't know if that contradicts what the policy says.
We can explore that.
Definitely.
There's a fee for...
Right.
Damage and...
No, it's just a yearly fee.
Oh, yearly fee, yeah.
It's like 25 bucks.
Yeah, I mean, it's not overwhelming, but it's still...
5136, thank you. So that, that's why it overlaps with electronic equipment, because this one electronically... Yeah, it must be, 5136 is electronic...
Equipment, devices.
.01 is the other one.
Is equipment, but then it refers to equipment and devices all the way through it.
Yeah.
So I think we need to explain which, what devices are and what equipment are.
Equipment is, okay.
And then maybe not say that we're going to provide any piece of equipment that we want people to have, students to have.
We need to specify what that means.
Yeah.
Be more specific.
Good feedback, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. And then we are with you, Mr. Tiberzki.
Thank you. I will recommend items 7.1 and 7.2 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1, Licensed Extra Duty, and 7.2 is a Licensed Resignation.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 and 7.2.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend item 8.1, which is Classified New Hires.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 9.1 and 9.2 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 are non-teaching pupil activity contracts, and 9.2 are athletic volunteers, both for the school year.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 and 9.2.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are at four groups. Greg, anything?
So I had a Sage Yard meeting and a Savaney Rec meeting this past month. And really, the highlight of that is the, our levy that was on the ballot last November passed, so the additional funds will be used to make some improvements throughout the district, which is exciting. Some new signs, improvements to buildings, some, some stuff that's needed to be done for a while, so that's exciting. And then as Dr. Motley mentioned, I'll be going down to Lobby Day on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Tammy?
I attended an S-SPO meeting on March 7th. There was a presentation by Mr. Arbansky on the Career Tech Program, and it was great. It highlighted things that I already knew about high school level programming, but he also talked about what they're doing at the junior high and elementary levels to help kids. They actually have, they have an Oculus that kids can try out, like, different careers, including surgery, which I kind of want to do myself.
Can we go back and travel back?
We had Operation back in the day. Now they have, like, the whole 3D experience.
And he also announced that the Career Tech Program had been awarded five stars by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development? Is that right? Okay. And we also had a, a subcommittee to the foundation meeting regarding revamping the community tailgate process. And so that we're looking, looking for ideas and ways to sort of make that more interesting and engaging for the community. Continuing that process with another meeting in April, I believe.
Thank you. I have a S-S Board meeting tomorrow night. I am on the Finance Committee, though, and we had a meeting this month, and they were able to secure a new Finance Director, and they are moving, kind of getting caught up because they're a little bit behind from that, and moving forward with plans to open a new childcare center over at Savaney Area Family Services. And they're looking at expanding the hours for the senior center, which, since having become involved on this board, I've gotten a lot of, it's really kind of great, the stuff they do over there. I'm a long way from being a senior, but I can see, it's, they do a lot of great stuff there, so it's been interesting to see. But like I said, we have a board meeting tomorrow, and I think that's, I didn't go to S-SPO. I am traveling to Orlando to see Northview's band and orchestra at Disney, so look for my posts and updates on how our kiddos do. I'm sure they're going to kill it, so.
Thank you. Dan?
Last week, we met as a policy committee and went over policies. It was a great meeting.
Yes, it was, that's always fun.
And we met with the Savaney Prevention Alliance, had a board meeting last Thursday, and I wasn't able to attend in person, but I attended virtually, and they had a very successful hot cocoa event, so we got some data back on that, and they're, they're doing great with that. And just wanted to say thank you for, to the foundation and everyone that was involved in the Hall of Fame event on Friday. It was a really nice event, so.
It was.
I also was at Savaney Prevention Alliance, and they're talking about their 40th anniversary. It's 40 years since their anniversary, which is a really long time. I think they said for a prevention organization, so working on plans for that. And Hall of Fame also, I was at the Hall of Fame. It was fantastic. This year was probably one of my favorites. I mean, it was, the speeches were all fantastic. They just, it is impressive, what...
It was.
It, right, it was so impressive, yeah.
It was a great...
It was really fantastic. And I was also at Policy, and I think that's it. Second opportunity for public participation, yes? Items not on our agenda? Okay, get the name wrong? Don't kill me. So Robert Kasparzik? Come on up, you can come on up. You, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and then you, the floor is yours for three minutes? Yeah, I think she's going to turn around the podium, so you're facing us.
Good evening. Robert Kasparzik, 2329 Westbrook, Toledo. Toledo. I don't live in Savaney. I just want to take a few minutes and share with you something. On Saturday, March 15th, 2024, Savaney Southview had their first game of the year, lacrosse game against Walsh Jesuit. My friend and fellow referee, Alan Radlinsky, we're both referees for lacrosse. He suffered a seizure during the game, right in front of everyone, the players, the coaches, and all the family members who were in the stands, and in front, and of course, in front of Coach Tony Hunter. He had the seizure, and the, I just want to say, your two trainers were right there. They were, they normally sit in their golf cart, but they were right there. They jumped into action. I was near the goal, and he was near the halfway point of, of the field, and by the time I got there, you two trainers were already helping him, which was great. I'm not medical, I don't have a medical degree, but I think he was dying. All I could do was just hold his hand, but the two trainers, they didn't hesitate, they knew what to do, they grabbed the defibrillator, which was fully charged, but fortunately, they didn't use it. They contacted first responders, who were there within minutes, and they helped my friend, Alan Radlinsky. The fire chief was there within just a few minutes. I don't know how, but he was. And then the ambulance came and drove right through the field, right to where Alan was laying on the ground, and they took him to Flower Hospital, which was great. I just want to publicly thank the trainers, and if I could make a suggestion, maybe put their name or their photograph on your website, because I, I don't even know their names. I Googled it, but I couldn't find it. But I just wanted to just say thank you to them, because they helped him, they helped me, and they got Alan to the right place. I bumped into the two trainers a couple weeks later, when I had another lacrosse game, and they were very professional.